Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge Public Schools hearing on the fiscal budget for the year 2122. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, the hearing will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meeting as provided for in the order. The instructions on how to ask or access the questions during the meeting are noted on the Southbridge Public Schools website, which is southbridgepublic.org. A recording will be posted on the site following the meeting. Again, this is our hearing on the proposed fiscal budget for the school year 2022. I now like to present Dr. Jeffrey Villar, who will give us the update on the budget. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to talk about our fiscal year 22 school budget. This is my fourth budget cycle in Southbridge, which for me is rather exciting because it represents I've concluded my third year and I'm now into my fourth year of working with the Southbridge community. Tonight, I want to begin with just a brief discussion about the budget process and how it works while remaining in state receivership. I realize there may be many people who are watching who are confused by the dynamics that are created by receivership, and I think it's important that the public understand the parameters in which we're expected to function. Typically, in accordance with Massachusetts law, specifically Chapter 71, Section 37, a superintendent would develop a budget for presentation to the local school committee for its adoption. This budget reflects the educational goals and policies set by a school committee and is aligned with the expectations of the State Board of Education. When a district is declared underperforming, as Southbridge was in 2016, the State Board of Education designates a receiver and assigns all the powers of both the superintendent and the local school committee to that appointee. This process was designed to ensure there was significant alignment between the goals and objectives of the school district and fiscal resources provided to the district with its operation. To be blunt, this process was intentionally created to prevent politics from impacting decisions that were necessary for the rapid improvement of a school system. An unfortunate side effect of receivership is the confusion that remains about the elected school committee and its function and its role. And its role has become limited in some ways to a supporter of the school district. I've stressed since my arrival that elected members of the school committee should focus on being the best cheerleaders and advocates for the school district. So tonight, we're presenting an object-level budget that will be for the purpose of the public to elicit comment and feedback. And then our next steps from here is I will present this budget to the Town Council's subcommittee, the Education and Human Service Subcommittee, on April 27th. At that time, we'll respond to questions from the Town Council, and we will hope that the budget will be adopted at a future meeting, most likely in May. This year has been a difficult year for all schools across our country, Southbridge as well. Not only are we charged with rapid improvement of the school district, but we have to do so during a once-in-a-100-year crisis, the global pandemic. I'm really pleased tonight to be joined by Dr. Margot Farrak, the Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Seth Racine, who does our business and operations. Tonight, I'm going to present really the impact and educational perspective of the school district and how that is functioning or helping set our priorities in our budget. Mr. Racine will then go into the fiscal development of the budget process, impact of state revenues, federal revenues, and how that impacts our operating moving forward. And for those watching at home, I apologize. It may appear that I don't realize how to use PowerPoint to make a presentation. We're having a technical issue tonight with Google Meets and PowerPoint not working nicely. So I'm relying on two formats. Can you hear? Been advised to take off the mask. All right. So, the budget that we're presenting is a $35.5 million full-funds budget, and that's all operating funds in our budget. So we're including funds that are either state or federal grants that have been included in our operating budget for this year. And that's an attempt to give the public a general, a good understanding of the full amount that it requires for us to run our school district. We have four goals this year. So obviously, the maintaining of a safe, healthy school as we manage the COVID-19 process. I've been a superintendent for a very long time in many different places now, going back more than decades. This is the most difficult budget cycle I've ever seen, the most unpredictable school year I've ever seen. It was the most unpredictable opening of a school. And if you ask me what September's going to look like, I'm not sure. And I don't think anyone knows. So we're trying to create a budget to meet all contingencies, but number one, of course, being safety. Number two, very important, is the work that we have engaged in over the last three years, which is setting our climate and culture goals, improving climate and culture across our schools, working on our literacy, language arts, and mathematics, improving instruction in those areas. This year, we're adding positions around support to help students as they re-enter schools. We have students who have been out of school for more than a fiscal year, an entire year, 365 days, who will be returning to our schools. We know the social-emotional needs of kids will be at an all-time high, and we're working to make sure our systems are focused on that. And obviously, we always look at our decreasing enrollment. That is a gradual process that's been occurring here in Southbridge, and making adjustments that are fiscally responsible. What I think is most important for the public here in Southbridge to know about this budget proposal is it does take into account the fiscal reality of the town of Southbridge. I've been working very closely with the town manager, members of the Town Council. I feel I'm pretty aware of the many significant needs that face this town. This budget requests a 1% increase over the town's contribution of last fiscal year. When you take into account the increases in state aid, we are asking the Town Council to provide us with a $35,000 increase fiscal year over fiscal year to contribute to our schools. This is possible because we're trying to take complete advantage of both state and federal monies that have been provided to school districts during the COVID-19 era, I guess we'll call it now. The pandemic's had a tremendous impact on our schools, and now it's the time for us to publicly thank our teachers, our staff members, our EAs, our principals, central office. These folks have kept their anxiety under control. They've put the needs of our children before their own health. I've had many conferences with staff members who were fearful for their lives, and they came to work. So we thank those educators. Schools shut down March 13th, 2020, and so we had a huge, excuse me, huge void in the lives of our children. Our staff stepped up. And I apologize, but this is a difficult presentation. Because I met with staff members who were afraid of their own well-being, their family's well-being, and they went to work. And they taught our kids. Our staff fed 214,000 meals outside of school for the town of Southbridge. They came out of our kitchens, our staff members, putting their lives on the line for Southbridge. We managed open schools five days a week in September and stayed open. We're open today because of our staff. We have been working to meet the educational needs of all of our children in a very imperfect time with a tremendous amount of stress, uncertainty, and demands, clearly. Never losing sight of the fact that we need to get better at what we're doing. I'm very proud of our staff. A lot of the work, Dr. Farrak helped lead this. We set policies and procedures over the summer to keep people safe, and those policies and procedures have worked, and I think that's very important. During this pandemic, Dr. Farrak and I joined a town team, meeting every week with the fire chief, police chief, town manager, health department, I'll forget other members, I'm sure, where we worked every week to make plans for the well-being of our students in our town. We faced disruption of learning, there is absolutely no doubt about that. Our teachers had to learn how to teach remotely through this digital platform, and it is not the same. And we've learned that through a year. We know this, and we've studied this, and we know it now for fact. But they did it, and they continue to do it, and they do a good job at it. I would say our teachers are as good at this as any teachers across this country. But we've identified in our data that our youngest children have experienced learning loss, and we need to address that as we go into next year. We're currently planning summer programs. We've also seen attendance down with students, particularly secondary-age kids. But we continue to focus on our priorities of improving our climate, our culture, that safe learning environment, both physically and emotionally. And we've improved our reading, our writing, and our mathematics as a district. But the sad data here, I don't expect everyone to understand what this chart means. This is a measure that we give kindergarteners multiple times a year. It's part of the DIBELS assessment. It's a fundamental reading blocks or building blocks of reading assessment. This particular assessment is letter naming fluency. Poor results on this are linked to future difficulties in reading. And what we saw this year with our incoming kindergarteners is their scores were clearly impacted by what happened last spring. And even if we look from, I'm sorry, I can't really use a pointer here, fall '19 to fall '20, we saw an increase in kids who were in need. Speculation is, well, we shut down our country and our state in March, and these kids came into school in the middle of all this. When we look at a different subtest, what we saw is while we're teaching kids phoneme segmentation fluency, which is really having them break down the sounds of words, our teaching is not perfect during the pandemic, there's no doubt about it, because what we saw is our growth this year wasn't what we had hoped and expected from what we'd learned in the last two years. Trying to teach kids in kindergarten who are learning from home through these computers isn't the same. We have a lot of work to do. We saw this carry through in first grade, too, where our first graders coming in this year were not at the levels we would have expected. But again, we speculate, because data can't tell us this, we speculate it was impact from the shutdown in March. So we're behind. Interesting in the data is after first grade, second grade and up, we don't see it. Now, by second grade, we can speculate kids have learned many of the building blocks and are able to begin to decode and read and are shifting to reading for comprehension through second to third grade. We're not sure, but it is something the data tells us. When we look at attendance, we started out at 93% in September and have decreased to I have personally reviewed call logs, home visitation logs, thousands and thousands of outreach efforts this year, but we're living in a pandemic and families have lots going on. When we look at attendance by learning style, we call it, so remote, in-person, or hybrid, what we learned through the data analysis is that our best attendance comes from kids who are going to school in person. When we saw this data, these data happening in the fall, our principals began aggressively calling parents and re-inviting kids back to school, saying, "Come back to school." We're seeing, one, attendance is higher, performance is higher when kids are in school. And the doors have been open for return to school as long as we had the social distancing for safety since mid-November. When we look at, let's see if we can make this a little smaller for folks, we look at our learning preference over time. So in September, 42% of kids were learning remotely in our district. We had 30% in-person. Now, in March, we find 41% of all kids are in-person and 32% are remote. Now, these data really look different when we break it down between secondary, which has hovered around a 50-50 split all year, and then we look at elementary school, where we see we started with 41% of our elementary kids learning remote this year, and we're now at 79% in-person. So the remote dropped to 20%. And at some of our schools, ERS in particular, West Street also is very high, they're in a high 80s now. Kids are coming back to school. They've been coming back since Christmas. They're participating in-person. From the beginning of this pandemic, I said we need to make school a positive choice for families, that they can send their children to school and feel like they're going to be safe. These data tell me the parents believe that, and they are sending their kids to our schools. I'm thankful that our staff have made this possible for these children. An important measure for us around our climate and culture work and our PBIS, our positive behavior interventions and support work, is a measure called the Tiered Fidelity Instrument. It's administered by outsiders, experts who come into our schools and survey and have conversations with individuals, to measure the progress of our implementation of PBIS, which is our focus on climate and culture. We're in a pandemic. We didn't give up on our focus. We continue to build our capacity, continue to implement. Our data showed that we are at higher than the 75% mark in all of our schools for Tier 1 implementation of our PBIS, and we have three out of six schools that are well on the way to all three tiers of implementation, which would be not only remarkable but essential if we're going to meet our objective and meeting the needs of every child in our schools. Our PBIS work this year continued to progress to such a point where we've recently been recognized by the Northwest PBIS Network and the University of Connecticut. Southbridge has, every one of its schools was recognized with a PIVOT Award this year. To my knowledge, we're the only district of our construct selected for this honor with all of its schools. We've also been subject of professional papers around our climate and culture work, and we've been recognized in flyers and materials produced by the university for the quality of our implementation. Again, our staff needs to hear that. They need to hear that we're proud of their work and that they're making a difference. Important to this whole budget process, you've heard about our goals, our progress to some of our goals, our struggles this year, our concerns about our student learning, and the needs to help them as we return kids to school, because there is a lot to help kids process in the upcoming months and even every day the rest of this year. We do look at our enrollment, because this is, as you'll hear from Mr. Racine in just a minute, enrollment drives Chapter 70 funding, and it becomes very important when we look at how the state is supporting our efforts here in town. And so you can see, we've been on a decline, 16% since 2014. And up until this past year, when the pandemic struck, we were making class size adjustments based on this. Social distancing efforts, we kept some staff on, that again, you'll hear about, because we need to make sure our environment is safe first and foremost. But we keep an eye on those data. School choice data is another set of data we keep an eye on, particularly one we're budgeting. But I think there's an interesting trend here that we have seen that the number of students choicing out is at its lowest really since 2016. So we've decreased that, and we have the highest number of students choosing in, at least in a decade, if not ever, into our district this year during the pandemic. So we have 15 kids choice in. I'd like to see hundreds choice in, but it's, I think, a good sign of progress. At this time, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Mr. Racine. He's going to quickly dive in, more so for those of you who are watching at home, because I know the members of this school committee saw parts of this presentation, so I know you're familiar with this. But I wanted Mr. Racine to talk about how Massachusetts funds schools, how it's related to our budget request. So for that, Mr. Racine, I'll turn it over to you. I'm going to put my mask on.
As I mentioned, my name is Seth Racine, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about the budget. I get the fortunate task to try to make numbers turn into something more than they really are and tell you the stories behind it, including sort of how do we get our money and then how do we spend it? The most important part of really the baseline here is what Dr. Villar just talked about, which is enrollment. Enrollment drives how we spend our money. It also drives how we receive our money. And we first want to give a little bit of a background to understand, so how does Massachusetts fund schools? Back in 1993, they passed an extraordinarily important influential law about how communities will fund schools. And it first said, "We are going to create a minimum amount, a floor, if you may say, that every community must spend at least this amount on education every year." How do they come up with that floor? Well, some people far smarter than me came together with a formula that said, "This is how much a student with these types of needs and how much it should cost." And that has been changed ever since. So what they do, what happens is every year, the people at the state take the number of public school students, both district students and charter school students, and they multiply it by these per pupil rates, per student amounts that should be spent per kid. And it's differentiated by need. So students in poverty get more, differentiated by grade level, by English learner. And they take that total, and it's, it's end up, that creates this floor, the minimum amount communities should spend. They can spend more, but they need to spend at least this, and that's known as the foundation budget. So you sort of walk through the visual here. You see the kids times the rate equals this blue floor here. And then we're going to go back up. But there's a second part to it. How do we pay for this floor? Well, Massachusetts has a very unique model that says, "Look, wealthier communities, more should come from local tax dollars, and they should receive less state aid. Less wealthier communities should receive more state aid." And the education state aid is known as Chapter 70. I wanted to start talking about the formula because there's going to, there's been a lot over the last year about changes to this based on a law that was passed about a year and a half ago called the Student Opportunity Act. There were many parts to this act, but one of the most important parts was that Massachusetts recommitted to education by saying, "We need to be spending even more on education, especially for students with greater needs." So, and what we're going to do is we're going to increase these minimum amounts we spend over the next seven years. So what I've done here is I'm, you'll see here, there's an elementary rate, a high school rate, an English learner at the middle school level, these rates can get kind of specific, English learner at the high school rate, and a low-income rate. The lightest blue all the way to the left is how much, the rate in FY '21, the fiscal year we're about to end. The next, the darker blue is what is proposed out of the Governor's budget for next year, now that's being implemented with the Student Opportunity Act. And then the orange is meant to show you, this is our own internal projection, so it's not necessarily set, but potentially by FY '28, these rates are going to increase pretty substantially. So elementary school students, this current year, it's 8,254. We are projecting it to increase to 9,657 by fiscal year 2028. If you notice, though, the largest increase is related to poverty, where for communities with the highest levels of poverty, that rate is going to grow from 4,681 to 9,589 per student. It is an extraordinary recommitment by the Massachusetts passed last year in the Student Opportunity Act, that more money needs to flow to students who have greater needs. It was supposed to be implemented this past year, but due to the pandemic, it was pushed And, and it was then scheduled again to be in the Governor's budget that he released The other thing I want to mention is that while it is delayed, it is also being discussed at Beacon Hill of going back to the original timeline to try to implement it actually six years from now, not seven years. So there's a lot more that's happening with this. So the Governor's budget that we built these revenue numbers on are based on a seven-year timeline. If it ends up so happening that it goes back to the original timeline and it goes back to six years, the good news is here is that it's going to just increase even more. And it will be, result in more revenue for Southbridge. So this is an illustration of how this works. Now, I will say that there are rates, as I mentioned before, for elementary school students and middle school students, and it's not poverty, and English learners and things like that. But just to sort of show at a high level, we're showing you here what happened for Southbridge to create this floor known as the foundation budget. You take the total number of students for Southbridge this past year is 2,231. We're showing you the average, as I mentioned, it's usually differentiated, but for the average, it was 13,438. That equals 29.979 million. Part of the Governor's budget for next year, we took the number of students, 2,210, times the per pupil rates, it is 31,747. When we project forward, it's going to be going up pretty substantially. We think potentially by FY '28, it could be as high as 41.7 million. Great? So here's another way of looking at it, and I'm showing you here roughly the split between how much is funded by state aid in the green to fund this floor and also in yellow by the the green to fund this floor and also in yellow by the local contribution, by local tax dollars. Over the next seven years, these numbers, we will find out more as every year goes. But I'm raising this because we're going to be hearing a lot more about this for the next few years. We're going to be receiving more education aid and there's going to be a greater need for local tax dollars to go to help fund this floor. Specifically, the floor that I was talking about, the foundation budget, in the governor's budget, it increased from 29.9 million at this top level in FY21 to 31.7 million in the governor's budget. This is a $1.7 million increase, 6%. And as I mentioned before, potentially, this actually could be even higher depending on what may happen at Beacon Hill. Then for the local contribution, it was scheduled to increase by almost 3%. Chapter 70 aid increased by a little over 2%. And so the net school spending number, this is sort of the legal amount when you add local contribution in Chapter 70, equals 2.4%. Small technical note is the net school spending isn't, is the legal minimum and oftentimes is very close to the foundation budget, but takes into consideration some minor callouts around the Chapter 70 aid and if there was any sort of spending as a shortfall. So with that context, let's talk about the FY22 budget development. As Dr. Valar mentioned at the very beginning of this, we build an all-funds budget. What is an all-funds budget? This takes, we first start with revenue, and we don't just take the local appropriation by the town, because that is only 78% of our total budget. We have to take into consideration grants. You can't take four fifths of a district and sort of plan for it and think, well, the other fifth, we'll figure out some other time. So we try to show you the whole picture. That's how we think about it. We build out the whole picture. So first, we start with revenue. We're projecting ahead what we think we might get from the town. We're hoping to get a 1% increase. We're projecting out ahead what we think we may get with entitlement grants. These specifics, we don't actually find out till the summer, usually in July or August. Once we come up with a pretty rigorous estimate for our total revenue, we then build up our programming, our staffing, and our expenses to be within that total revenue cost, but we sort of take it all as one. Here's all of our expenses at a high level and to make sure it meets the overall amount Specifically, in Southbridge's case, the town of Southbridge is part of the governor's budget. We mentioned before about Chapter 70 aid. There's other parts of this in terms of education-related aid as well as costs. And so what you have here is what is happening in terms of state aid and state costs that are related to education. This includes charter tuition costs. This also includes some of the reimbursement costs related to charter schools. This mentions the school choice cost that was mentioned before. When you take all that into consideration, you're extraordinarily fortunate because next year, as part of the governor's budget, the net state education aid is actually going to increase for the town of Southbridge by $258,000. So our 1% request for our appropriation is almost completely funded by just state aid. And this number may change depending on what may happen at Beacon Hill, and it may actually increase more. I mentioned before that we take all of our funding sources, so we also project grant revenue. We receive both recurring revenue for grants from the federal government, from the state government, usually in the form of entitlement grants based on her students and changes in enrollment that was mentioned before, drive these costs. We also receive non-recurring grants. These are competitive grants that we receive. The largest source is actually related to receivership. So we're very fortunate, we receive substantial amounts of money as a receivership district. Despite all of this, we still are projecting that our grant revenue is going to be decreasing by about $705,000. So let's put it all together. This chart here shows you how we take the total grant, the total revenue. The town appropriation, we said we're seeking a 1% increase, that's a $293,000 increase to 29 million. Our recurring grants, these are based on enrollment mainly, we're expecting those to go down approximately 10% to 2.55 million. Our non-recurring grants, this is mainly just related to receivership, I should say, it's about 1.78 million. But then, what we're doing is because of what we need for our students for next year, we're going to be using, this budget is built on 2.13 million in COVID-related federal stimulus funding. You've heard about this all year, talking about how we're using it. We're also built a budget assuming we're going to need more for next year. As Dr. Valar mentioned earlier, we don't quite know what's going to be happening. So in our preliminary planning, we have assumed to use 2.13 million. Before we leave revenue, we're often asked, well, wait, how much is actually coming from the state? How much is coming from the federal government? And how much is coming from local dollars? Well, that's a little messy sometimes, you could say, with the town appropriation and stuff like that. But this is our attempt to try to actually show you. For next year, assuming the 1% increase, you'll see here, local resources are in green and state and federal funding is in blue. So for next year, we're actually projecting at $35 million revenue that we're getting, 77% is going to be coming from state and federal aid, and about 23% is from local dollars. So for every dollar we spend in Southbridge Public Schools, 23 cents comes from local dollars and 77 cents comes from state and federal aid. So we built up the revenue, we got to 35.5 million. Hopefully, people are still with me here, we haven't fallen asleep. So how do we spend it, right? Well, it's pretty, pretty simple of what we buy stuff on. We spend almost all of it, 92%. We're going to go back to that dollar example, 92 cents on the dollar goes towards people, buses, buildings, and tuitions related to students mainly, students with disabilities with severe needs that we can't serve in the district and we need to send out of the district to better services. That's it. And I should say, this doesn't include health insurance that is paid on the town side. So salaries, we're spending about 68%. Benefits, again, this excludes health insurance, it's only about 2%. Special education tuitions, 8%, transportation, 10%, and then utilities and maintenance is a little over 3%. Here, those large account, those large account amounts broken out to show you the cost between last year, FY2020, this year, the FY2021 budget, and then next year, what we're projecting. Now, you'll see here, there's a column in between FY21 and '22, because we really want to make sure that you understand, if you just look at the change from FY21 to '22, you start to look at where the biggest increases and decreases, right? Well, the biggest increase is in salaries. Well, that is exclusively driven by the fact that we added approximately 56 FTEs this year to deal with the pandemic. Drove up salary costs. It was needed for this year. We've built in assumptions for next year. We don't, again, quite know what's going to be happening. We're very fortunate through federal stimulus money to be able to afford these costs, and that's what's driving the huge increase in our salaries. What are some of these staffing investments we made this year that are projected to continue for next year? Sanitation specialists, additional custodians, certified nursing assistants, bus monitors. We've also identified some new staff, including a reading coach and adjustment counselors and instructional interventionists. Finally, this is also a program budget, and we have built over many years a dual-language program that is at Eastford Road School, it's now at West Street School, continues to build up every year, and so those new positions are also in here. Not quite done yet. One last thing before we go. We showed you the annual budget for all funding sources. In addition, we have also submitted our requests for capital needs in terms of the town's capital appropriation. These needs are in general, and we have a five-year timeline in the budget book near the end. These needs were driven by a 2019 facilities evaluation on the Southbridge Public Schools done by the town. So our requests for next year include money for window replacements, weather stripping doors, emergency roofing repairs, interior repairs such as painting and handrails and door repairs, HVAC replacements, electronic visual aid displays such as screens. As we all know, our world is changing, especially with technologies moving very quickly, so we are looking to replace our electronic visual aid displays. And finally, an amount for the third year, we purchased through a lease purchase process, two vehicles. We have finally, in our proposal, included a place holder here of $200,000 to create a master plan study for our elementary schools. If you look at our capital plan, we submitted to them based on the town's facility evaluation of SPS in 2019, there are substantial costs in that plan for new roofs, boilers, especially for the elementary schools that were built in the early 90s, renovated in the early 90s, and 25 collab. So there should be some conversation about what happens with these buildings, how do we best utilize these buildings? How do we take advantage of opportunities for even more state aid through the Massachusetts School Building Authority? So to help with that, we have put aside $200,000 to help create a master plan for that. And with that, we would appreciate any questions you may have.
Does anybody here have any questions? Andrew?
So first, I want to say it's nice to see everybody in person.
It's nice to be in person.
Fantastic presentation from both of you. It was very thorough, very informative, especially for the general public. If you don't know how Chapter 70 works, it was a great instructional piece to be able to help everybody understand exactly how much of our budget is paid for truly by the state and how much is local dollar. So thank you very much for going through that in detail. As far as the, specifically the technological infrastructure, the visual aids and things like that, is some of that funding also for additional computer resources for the kids with the Chromebooks? Is that tied? Not 100% if we own these Chromebooks or if we're leasing them from an outside company? Not 100%.
Thank you for that question. So over the summer, obviously, we worked very hard to secure the Chromebooks, so we now have a one-to-one Chromebook implementation in our district, and that was quite touch and go, as the whole world was trying to get Chromebooks. And I'd like to thank our technology director, Mr. John Parent, for being quite out of the box in his thinking and securing for us the high-quality technology we needed this year. In our budget proposal, we're building in the proper refresh rate so that as a district, we can sustain our one-to-one Chromebook initiative moving forward. One of the, you know, out of bad sometimes comes good. The pandemic has taught our educators that we have some really powerful tools in these Chromebooks, and they can be integrated into instruction with children in the classroom in a very engaging way. And so we anticipate to continue to utilize that technology moving forward. So from this day forward and this budget, the whole plan is that we'll have a self-sustainable technology program with Chromebooks. In my estimation, the Chromebooks really never should have been a capital item, and they're part of operating, and so we're building that budget so they're part of operating. It's an instructional supply.
Thank you. And as far as the student performance with some of the hybrid and the remote learning academy, independently, have you seen, well, I guess I wouldn't say independently, have you seen some growth in students on campus with the usage of the Chromebooks as an additional?
Well, just today, I was touring the middle school as part of our monthly review, and one of the teachers in our intervention class, which uses Read 180, which is technology Chromebook-based reading instruction, combines both use of real authentic literature and instruction on a computer. Her comment to me was she believes we're going to see an increase in the performance of our eighth graders as they move into ninth grade, based on their work this year. I was taken aback a little bit, wasn't expecting that comment from that instructor, but I do believe some of these technologies used correctly have helped accelerate some students. We, at the middle school, also have a group of students, approximately 70, who are using a program called Edgenuity, and it's individual personalized remote learning, and they've been very successful the entire year, so much so that the principal petition that they allow to finish on that platform. And part of our work has been to make sure and monitor each child's progress and try to get them in the platform where they're most successful. So lots of kids were invited back, because that's where we knew they'd be more successful. Some kids were doing very, very well on a platform, and we said, all right, let's support them on that platform. So there's, you know, they're going to be balanced, again, learning from what works for kids is part of all this. If you go back to one of my slides around PBIS and the multiple tiers that we're trying to implement, you want to have your tier one, which is for everybody, work as good as possible, but then there's tier two and three, different types of interventions that work for kids. We need to individualize and personalize. So this technology seems to be able to give us a new entry point into helping some kids.
So in conclusion, you would consider that these Chromebooks as part of the operating budget, which is the way that it should be factored in as far as not capital, is necessary to the rapid growth and progress of Southbridge Public School students?
I think we've seen that it's going to be a very powerful tool. It's already helped kids, and we're going to continue to utilize it, because I do believe it's going to close learning gaps for lots of kids.
I was extremely thrilled to see the district get these Chromebooks, and it, like you said, a happy circumstance out of a tragedy, because I think that technology in the classroom is extremely important moving into the 21st century for a district, and you guys did an amazing job on creating an infrastructure wireless network to get our students educated during the pandemic. And I've got to, my son went from a B.C. student with Edgenuity in sixth grade to made the high honor roll with straight A's last quarter. So to your point of cater the education to the student, I saw the result firsthand, although you're right, some students didn't need the in-school, but the fact that we have that dynamic, I commend the efforts of the school district and yourself to actually make that a viable option, not only just for the pandemic, but moving forward. Thank you.
You're welcome.
James, any questions?
I just have one. The bottom line is 1% more than last year's budget. Is that correct?
Correct. From the town side.
Yeah, from the town side. So when you go to the town council, you'll be asking for 1% more. How, one other question, how are the negotiations going in terms of the budget?
Well, we haven't really had a conversation with the town council yet around the budget.
Oh, I understand that, but factoring in salary is going to be part of the budget you present to them.
Well, when you build a budget, we have to project where we think salaries are going to be, and so that's part of your salary line item. You do that every year. So, you know, you have to figure out what your relationship is with each of your bargaining So, you know, you have to figure out what your relationship is with each of your bargaining units and, you know, you project, typically, we project, I believe it's 2%, Mr. Racine, as, you know, salary increase line. And then you see where you come at.
Mrs. Gullickson, any questions from afar?
Let me just check because she could have text.
I see somebody's waving their hands. Is that Gus?
Yeah, it is. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I had a quick question. I know from some of the other towns that I've been covering, they're expressing some concerns about creating what they describe as a budget cliff regarding staff from, that are being funded by federal grants like the U.S.R. Grants and other things, when they expire in two years. How are you planning for that?
Well, as you may recall from our presentation, we highlighted the positions that were created. So at the end of the day, they're linked to this funding. So we don't have the funding, the positions have to go. Unfortunately, we've been pretty good at reducing positions since I've arrived. My first year was 32 positions that went because we didn't have the funding. You know, I would like to say that we can have continued funding, keep positions and keep growing. But as Mr. Racine pointed out, it's really tied to enrollment numbers. So we carefully are utilizing COVID monies wherever possible for services that are necessary. So that's where you see the people. And then for materials, masks, stuff that when this all goes away, we don't need to buy anymore. So we're very, very aware of potential funding cliffs.
Okay, that's definitely important. Are there anything, are you using anything from the COVID funds for things that might end up being an issue later?
We will maximize every dollar of COVID funds to be sure that we don't run into a circumstance where we don't have enough money in our operating budget and we'd have to return to the town council and ask them for additional appropriation. So as we carefully budget, we're trying to make sure that we have the funding for all of our programming. Again, the funding cliff that's going to occur with all these COVID things, it'd be super problematic if we started to utilize COVID monies for classroom teacher positions, you know, other, you know, essential positions that you operate on because they're going to have to be cut when the money goes away. It's just a reality.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing and hearing none, I'd like to thank Dr. Valar and Seth and the team for presenting a, an excellent budget with well within, I think, the town's expectations. We look forward to the official hearing. Until then, we'll close the meeting.
Thank you all very much.